Town Council regarding land use matters in the town of Monument. Each Commissioner agrees to a nonpartial, objective and fair review, which includes no prejudgment of the projects. Should a Commissioner wish to disqualify him or herself for any conflict or personal or financial interest in this matter before us tonight, please say so now. For those attending tonight who wish to provide comment on agenda items, you may speak to the Commission during the public comments section of the agenda. Those who attend in person will be called upon first and are asked to come to the podium and sign in with your name and address. Those attending via Microsoft Teams will be called upon next and are asked to utilize the raise your hand option and unmute your microphone when called upon. We ask that if multiple people have the same comment, only one person speak on that same subject. Again, thank you for attending. Now begin the meeting with roll call.
Danny, can you hear?
I can hear you now.
We're looking for approval of the minutes from the December 11th meeting.
Oh, okay. I don't have an agenda in front of me.
Oh, I apologize. Okay, so I'll step in for you as your surrogate, if that's okay. No one else has any problem. So we need a motion to approve the December 11th Plan Commission minutes.
I move to approve the minutes from the December 11th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting.
I second the motion.
All right. Chair hours.
Yes.
Commissioner Green.
Yes.
Commissioner Egley.
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
And Commissioner Hatch.
Yes.
Thank you. That concludes roll call. So the first item on the agenda tonight is electing a chair and a vice chair for planning commission. Before we go into that, I handed out a list of the roster for planning commission. There was a planning commission members that was, you were all thankfully reappointed as of this last Monday night by Town Council. I wanted to make sure I handed this out because I don't want any question about, or I want to make sure there are no errors about what number of terms and how long your terms are. I think we've got them all corrected from when I started. So, but if you see anything, just please let me know. But I appreciate all of yours and Council appreciates all of your volunteer, you volunteering for this position and filling this role. We do have two vacancies. So if you know anyone who's interested in participating as an alternate member, please have them apply through the website or give me a call. I'd love to bring them along. So I guess there hasn't been a formal process in the past for electing a chair and a vice chair. So I leave it to you to nominate and volunteer and choose your chair for the, for the 2025 and a vice chair to back them up when they're not able to attend. Danny, please feel free to stop me or jump in whenever you're, if you think you need to or you're not comfortable with me leading.
No, you're doing great.
Thank you, sir.
Chairman Hours, or at least Vice Chairman Hours and Chairman for the evening. This is Commissioner Egley. I would like to nominate Martin Treheal to continue as Chairman of the Planning Commission for the next term.
I second.
All right, I want to continue with the vote.
Is there any discussion first? Nope, okay, go for it.
All right, let's see. Vice Chair Hours or Chair Hours?
Yes.
All right. Commissioner Green.
Yes.
Commissioner Egley.
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith. And Commissioner Hatch. Right, vote for Chair Treheal to remain Chair. Six in favor, one opposed. Or five in favor, one opposed. Thank you. Also need to fill the position of Vice Chair.
Chairman Hours, this is Commissioner Egley. I would like to nominate Chad Smith to serve as Vice Chair for the next term.
Second.
Thank you. I will now continue the vote if there's no discussion. All right, Hours.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Green.
Yes.
Commissioner Egley.
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith, I don't know if that works still, but Commissioner Hatch. All right, I'm going to assume you were a yes. All right, that would make it six in favor or seven in favor, one opposed. Thank you. Congratulations. So if it's okay, Danny, do you want to hand over the ceremonial gavel over to Chad for the evening?
I would love to.
There you go. Thank you for your service over the last many years, but this last year is about, is Vice Chair. Okay.
Yeah, thank you, Danny, for your service and for your support there as well. So at this time, we will move to public hearings and recommendations. First case is for a quest for approval of a final plat known as Woodmore Placer Replat B. This case has been noticed for public hearing and I will now send it to the staff for the presentation.
Okay, so the first case is Chair Smith said is case number 13, 2024. A final, a request for approval of the final plat known as Woodmore Placer Replat B. First, I just want to let everyone know here, this is a public hearing and public notice has been provided per Chapter 18 requiring public notice at least 15 days prior to any public hearing for a land use change, that it be mailed to property owners within 500 feet and posted on property. The applicant has complied with this notice requirement and affidavits are on file in the Town of Monument Planning Department. This. So you're familiar with this property in case. It came before you as a sketch plan at the December 11th meeting. The applicant Brett Benke from CSI Development is here tonight. The property is specifically located at 17360 Jackson Creek Parkway. It's the vacant property to the north of the YMCA, Jackson Creek Parkway. To the north is a vacant property that's, has a preliminary PUD approved on it. To the west is I-25. To the east is Lewis Palmer High School and as I said before, to the south is YMCA. Their request is approval of a final plat known as Woodmore Placer Replat B. And. Still learning how to drive. Just so everyone's aware, the existing zoning of the property is Jackson Creek, I'm sorry, the Regency Park Overlay District and specifically mixed commercial or planned commercial. Thank you. And it's designated as business campus by the comprehensive plan. Related ordinances are provided in the staff report that you have for you tonight. Most recently, the Plan Commission approved Resolution Number 1, 2024, which is a resolution approving a sketch plan for Woodmore Place or Replat B. There are multiple other ordinances that establish zoning, change zoning names and so on, which leads the property to where it's at today and what is, what can be built or developed on the site. The image before you is the final plat that's before you tonight. The property is currently an unplatted parcel. The applicant, Mr. Benke of CSI, is seeking approval of this final plat for the purpose of subdividing individual lots for sale and future development, dedicating public utility easements, dedicating private drainage easements, and creating private access that will support the individual lots. The applicant is not seeking site plan approval at this time. Development of the individual lots will require the developer or the individual developers of those properties to come in, either through administrative or other vehicles according to code. The applicant did supply an updated stormwater management plan for the property. This stormwater preliminary drainage report was created by West Works Engineering as of last, end of last June. That document was provided to you in your packet. The document concluded that the developments onsite, onsite stormwater drainage systems will provide adequate protection to this site without adversely impacting adjoining upstream and downstream properties. With that said, during the site plan review process, a final drainage report will be required to ensure the developments onsite stormwater systems have been adequately addressed per downtown development standards. The applicant also provided a traffic analysis report dated August 30th, 2024, produced by LSC Transportation Consultants. The report concludes that the proposed commercial development is not expected to have a negative impact on traffic operations for the surrounding roadway network. However, similar to the stormwater report, with that said, during the site plan review process, an updated traffic impact analysis report may be necessary to identify any off-site road improvements required by the developer based on specific uses in individual lots. The staff and its consulting engineer have reviewed the proposed plat that's before you tonight and they've determined that it meets the criteria of the town's land development code as well as conforming with the technical, local, county and state plat requirements and regulations. In the event a site plan is submitted to the town in the future, staff will work with the applicant to ensure the proposed use of the site is consistent with the criteria of the site plan approval in accordance with the code and place conditions on that site plan approval as may be necessary and allowable pursuant to the, to the development code to achieve the goals highlighted in the town's codes and ordinances governing the use of the subject property. And with that, I'm going to, if you still would like to do a presentation, Brett, I can put, I will attempt to put your presentation up on the screen. I'm going to tell you, you'll want to look up there.
Thank you, Dan, and I will try to be brief, but good evening, Commissioners. Nice to see you all again. I was just here in December. And I'm Brett Benke with CSI Development. So this should look, yeah, very similar to the sketch plan that you just approved the December 11th meeting. So Dan stated that this is an unplatted lot, but it is actually currently platted. One lot, 11.65 acres. So what this final plat seeks to do is subdivide that one lot into six commercial lots and one tract for detention pond and as well as it will, it creates an east-west private drive off of Jackson Creek Parkway that will provide pedestrian and vehicular ingress and egress. And then as well as there's a 25-foot north-south ingress and egress easement along the west side of lots five and six. There will also be a boundary easement and internal easements for utilities. As Dan said, the subject property is currently zone planned commercial development in the Town of Monument Regency Park Overlay. A rezoning is not being requested and all future uses must conform to the existing zoning pursuant to the land development code. It is also worth noting that this property is subject to the Woodmore Improvement Association, which adds additional restrictions and projects require Architectural Control Committee approval. Dan, if you could go to the next slide. Yeah, sure. I kind of, yeah, so sketch plan, I think I touched on this already and jumped over, but if you want to go to the, and providing this to you again for reference, showed at the sketch plan level, you know, again, conceptual at this, at this stage, this is our best guess of how we could see this site being developed, fully developed. Go to the next slide. This is just to show that we have submitted all items pursuant to the final plat checklist. Next slide. And that this is our narrative, which substantiates how we have met all of the review and approval criteria for a final plat pursuant to Town Code Section 18.02.260C. So I am here along with our traffic engineer, Jeff Hodson with LSC, and we're happy to answer any questions you may have. So thank you.
Thanks, Brett.
Thank you, Brett. At this time, we'll open the public hearing and open up public comments. Is there anybody in person that would like to speak in regards to this current project that's before us? I see none. Is there anyone online, Mr. Ray?
At this time, I don't see anyone who's raising their hand or is talking in the chat to participate.
So Chair Smith, so what I've provided to you in your packet is a draft findings of fact. I've got those up here. I can certainly go through them one item at a time. And then you're welcome to modify them as needed based on your discussion. But the first item, our first finding is that the proposed final plat does not establish the, although the final plat does not establish the ultimate use of the property and its, and its conformance with the plan, trails and open space in other plans at the site. The proposed plat does, it does not conflict with the application of the comprehensive plan, which is not what it says on here. Yeah. Yeah, I'm slowing down a little bit. I apologize. The, this does comply with the comprehensive plan, folks. So I want to make sure that we change that finding. It's compatible, it's compatible with the adjacent pieces of property is a planned business campus. It will be compatible with the YMCA to the south and developments to the north. Its lot and development patterns are also consistent with future development of the properties along Jackson Creek Parkway. The proposed final plat effectively suggests sufficient capacity of services throughout, through the approved Woodmore Placer Replat B sketch plan. Confirmation of service capacity shall occur during site plan review. Cost of improvements, the proposed final plat does not contemplate or provide development details and therefore the property owner is unable to establish that they will bear the property's share of the cost of onsite and offsite community improvements. Review and approval as required, again, this will, this will occur during site plan approval and the review of a public improvement agreement for the property. The proposed final plat does not contain tracts of land that may provide cause of concern regarding fire, flood, geological hazards as required for review and approval criteria for a final plat. The proposed plat does not contain tracts of land that may provide for the future preservation or conservation of significant stands of vegetation. And while the contents in form of the proposed plat conforms with technical plat requirements, it doesn't include adequate, and I'm going to back that one out and say that it does comply with the development code. At a minimum, the future development will require site plan approval and be reviewed to conform with underlying zoning designation as, as the applicant said during his presentation. Additional modifications to the final plat might be required in the future, but at this time, we do not anticipate any changes will be needed. I apologize for the errors in my online list here, but we'll, let's make sure that we clarify that as we, as we proceed forward. So what we're asking for tonight is a recommendation to approve the final plat known as Woodmore Placer B, Replat B located at 17360 Jackson Creek Parkway as supported by the documents that are attached by reference to the staff report, which includes the final plat, drainage report, traffic impact study, the project narrative provided by CSI Development, the, the resolution approving the sketch plan from December 11th as well as a revised version of the draft findings of fact. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Let's, I want to go ahead and close the public hearing at this time. We didn't have any public comments and now we can move to Commissioner questions and comments. I'm going to start with you, Mr. Egley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had a question for the applicant, Brett. I hadn't heard this before until you mentioned it right at the end that you'll have to abide by design standards from the, as according to Woodmore Improvement Association. Why is that? Can you explain that to me?
Trying to think when that was originally, there are protective covenants over the property that I believe date back to 1999 or 2001. And so that whenever it was originally platted, if that, if those protective covenants were placed or it was within Woodmore Improvement Association's boundaries. But there are protective covenants that are of record that have various restrictions on use, design guidelines, references how you have to abide by their Architectural Control Committee, you know, process and so forth.
Okay. Well, I hadn't heard, I just assumed since everything was within entirety of the Town of Monument that our codes would supersede that, but apparently not.
I think it's above and beyond. It's in, and I'd like to even, maybe it sounds like the town attorney would like to add to it, but my understanding is, yes, everything has to meet the Town of Monument standards. There could be additional standards that are required, you know, additional use restrictions. Like I know specifically, they would not allow for RV storage, even though that doesn't meet in planned commercial development anyway, but they specifically have that as a use restriction. So just various things like that. Okay. Have anything, mister?
Yeah, sure. Okay. So the private development restrictions were probably placed with the original Woodmore subdivision and this is a replat of one or more lots, I guess one lot. So the private restrictions would be, you know, most people are familiar with restrictions in HOA. Might, you know, limit pits, those kinds of things. In this case, the original developer would have put private development restrictions on the property. They don't supersede or usually they reference that you have to be compliant with whatever the local jurisdiction zoning is. But yeah, they're parallel and independent of each other. One's a private restriction and the other zoning is a public restriction. So the developer, the current developer will have to comply with both. If he breaks the zoning code, we go through a public process. If he breaks the private restrictions, it would be a private recourse through the courts. So they don't, it won't supersede, it would probably be more restrictive than zoning. Things that might ban would be uses that would not be compatible with selling every lot at a high value. So sometimes car washes are banned. There's a list of obnoxious uses that developers normally put on because one bad use can ruin their entire development.
So does that tie your hands in any way of what we, what you eventually can put into that location?
You know, honestly, the Woodmore Improvement Association has been very, you know, good to work with and we've recently kind of aligned, at least as it relates to uses, setback requirements, height restrictions, all of that is aligned with the Town of Monument standards. You know, they just want to have the process to, you know, have the opportunity to review and approve because it falls within their boundaries. But their association is really set up for residential. So there's only a couple of lots, I believe the YMCA and then the property to the south of the YMCA. I don't know of any other commercial lots that are within their district or boundaries.
Sorry, thanks. Well. I'm in favor of the entire project, but I do have, my primary concern that I've raised last time and it continues into this evening is really traffic and access in and out of the property. Just looking at some data on Google Maps, from the Higbee Road light to the light at the south entrance to the YMCA is 1,200 feet. From that light to the north entrance and exit, the right in, right out there, if you want to look at it that way, at YMCA is 450 feet. And the halfway point into this development is another 330 feet. So I know that the traffic analysis and the traffic report is recommending a full motion light at that intersection into the development, but that essentially puts two stoplights within 700 feet of themselves with another stoplight right at Higbee Road. And I don't want to see the same situation develop there that we already have down the road further south at the King Super Shopping Center, where from Baptist Road into the King Supers entryway is only 400 feet. And from the King Supers exit, exit and entrance to Lion's Tail is only 367 feet. And so I don't want to have the same situation develop that we already have there here. So for me to give it a yes vote, the only way that I can do that is if we condition this with a right in, right out only into this property. So I just wanted to make that a public notation. That's all I have right now.
I think more of a question for staff. So the FDR, the front drainage report required at the first site plan that comes into the property. Is that correct?
There will be a master plan, public improvement agreement associated to this site and which should address most of those issues in that discussion. But yes, each parcel will require further analysis and confirmation of impact on traffic, stormwater and other public infrastructure.
Is the overall plan for CSI to put in the main infrastructure pond prior to site plan? Is that the plan for that? Is that how that would work? On, yeah, detention pond and main infrastructure. Then several developers would come and purchase a lot and submit a site plan. Is that how?
Correct. So there's, we have basically one, one user that is, you know, we consider the initial phase. CSI would put in all of the, the roadway. The, the roadway, wet and dry utilities, detention pond. And, and then would sell, you know, basically finished paths to other, other users or. Develop it ourselves if the user, you know, presents itself to us, so.
Thanks.
Yep.
No additional rightaways required for that, that right turn lane, the deceleration lane, is that correct?
I imagine you vetted that at that, this point anyways with, you know, coming in.
The concept plan and then.
The, the, the right away width for Jackson Creek Parkway is established there. It matches properties far to the north and far to the south. There's, there's no. Discrepancies between those sites, so that they've got the full right away.
Adequate for the deceleration.
It's correct.
Makes sense. Thanks. From a traffic standpoint. I think I have a little bit less of a concern mainly trying to compare it to King Supers just because copper King Supers. Baptist is what a probably a major arterial, something like that. It's a much larger. Roadway with a lot more traffic coming in, entering King Supers versus what we're looking at here. I don't know what, how the traffic compares to King Supers, but it seems like that one, you know, comes up, you know, frequently. Or Jeff, if you have any insight on, on that comparison, if it's a relevant comparison or if this is. This traffic count is, you know, far less than what we'd be looking at at King Supers intersection.
Yes, Jeff Hodston, LSC Transportation Consultants. I'll sign in here. Yeah, so the. This project generates, it'll generate fewer trips than that, the King, King Supers Shopping Center. So it's. Yeah, that one's more, more intensive because grocery stores tend to be a lot more. Per square foot, you know, traffic intensive than, than sort of a. Individual lot, commercial development, so for smaller lots, so. As far as the spacing goes. So yeah, it's about seven hundred and fifty feet north of the signal at. The YMCA and also serves the school on the east side. So that is, you know, there's enough distance there for the, to be able to coordinate the signals. Along that corridor as well as to fit in those turn bays. So what we looked at is. You've got left turns coming from the south. On, coming from the south, northbound Jackson Creek turning left into this project, and then you've got. Traffic southbound turning left into the school. So there's enough distance there for those stacking left turn bays. To operate properly and, you know, with this, it's a signal at this location. This intersection is going to be a T intersection, meaning there's not, it's not a four leg. There's, there's not going to be a. An east leg of this intersection, the, the intersection only goes to the, to the west. So basically it's, it's a T. So there's a lot, there's fewer signal phases and it's more efficient generally. Able to serve the traffic and then, then a four leg intersection, which has. Many different, you know, left turns from each direction and, and all that. So from, from the standpoint of coordinating and. You know, being able to serve the corridor, a T intersection is much easier to coordinate and, and run and operate, so. Plus, I don't see that the development could. It's, it's showing that from our preliminary estimates of a sort of a generic commercial development, we try to be somewhat conservative with. The traffic intensity. It's looking like a signal, at least the peak hours would meet those warrants for thresholds for signal. Now, other hours need to meet it. But it's, there's a good potential that that will need a traffic signal. If you don't, if you make it a right in, right out, you introduce. You know, aside from the fact that it, it would be difficult for patrons and. For the viability of the commercial to not allow left turns, but you start introducing a lot of unwarranted, un. Unintended consequence, like a lot of U-turns and things like that, if you, if you restrict it to right in, right out, so.
Or. Traffic that might enter into the residential neighborhood to the north that's planned. Through that to come, be able to come back out into the right, right turn.
To turn around or something. Sure, yeah. U-turns or, or if you sign it for no U-turns, people. Make a left and then they wander a little bit and make a U-turn in the next intersection, the first intersection they come to and things like that. So you end up with some. Unintended consequences there, so.
Could be more dangerous to put in a right in, right out versus a signal. Potentially.
With some of those. Because people figure out a way to get.
Okay, that's, that's helpful. Thank you.
Yeah.
Now, go ahead, just, yeah, reiterating that from the traffic standpoint, it seems. Like the King Supers comparison, that, that area is pretty, gets pretty congested, agreed, but may not be as. Well, this area will increase traffic obviously, but maybe won't have the, the issues that the King Supers area does. I think that's, that's all, all the questions I had. Thank you.
Okay, great. Anything else?
I have questions, but not about traffic.
Thank you.
So the Woodmore District is a water and sanitation district. So. Correct. They're, they're just getting water and sanitation from Woodmore. That's why it's in that district.
I think there, there's two different entities. There's the Woodmore Water and Sanitation District, and then there's the Woodmore Improvement Association. So if I said district, I, I meant Woodmore Improvement Association.
So they don't overlap. So am I understanding? They don't, they're not getting their water from Tribeview, are they?
No, this is, it's subject to both. The, the water provider, water sewer provider for this site is the Woodmore Water and Sanitation District. Yep. But also subject to the Woodmore Improvement Association.
And, and the YMCA is in that district and it worked very smoothly. I think that the YMCA. Came out to be a very, very good project. And my only comment is really to the staff because. I still don't understand why a zone district called PUD has no PUD review. Therefore, I would ask staff, when you do your site plan review. Would you make sure that these, the architecture is compatible with the Y? Using any means you have, because I don't know what tools you have to do that, but. It would be nice to see the architecture compatible and even to the point of having a similar color palette to review. Whatever you can do in that regard.
Understood. We'll work with the developer on that.
That's all I have.
Commissioner Hours, you want, I have a question. Can you hear me?
No, the left, the left turn lane would be built with the project and it would be. It would be in use all the time. Oh, yeah. I think with the eight hours, maybe you're referring in our report, we mentioned an eight hour traffic signal warrant. We also, there's also a four hour traffic signal warrant. So there's, there's several, there's eight signal warrants. That the, that's in the Federal Highway Administration's guidebook, if you will. So the two most common are. Are four hour volume and eight hour volume. So if any, there, and they lay out a certain. Set of thresholds of traffic volumes. Per hour, if it's all based on per hour volume. Over the course of a typical day, so. And they have, they have thresholds, volumes that the major street, which is north, south, in this case. Jackson Creek Parkway need to reach certain levels of traffic. And then you've got the minor street, which is in this case, the main access to the project. So coming out, it's traffic coming out. And if, if those volumes meet a certain level, the two combined, if they meet the levels, then. It either, either it can meet a eight hour or a four hour. That's what those are for. We, at this preliminary stage, we looked at the two. Peak hours, so the morning roughly seven, eight, afternoons, four to, four to five PM roughly. So we looked at those two hours just to get a, a sense of, we're getting close to, you know, do, do those two hours meet the thresholds? Chances are you'll see. The hour before that and potentially the five to six hour, you may end up getting four hours of the day, but that can be. Further studied at the site plan stage when we know more information.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. The question I have with regard to the traffic, because I have the same concern that Commissioner Eggly had. Had expressed with regard to the closeness of the two lights. Based on what I've heard, I think maybe I'm going to get the answer that I want, but. When those lights are operative. Will there be a time? When the southbound lights? Are green? At this new intersection? And the light at the YMCA would be red and vice versa going north.
How the signals are coordinated could be a brief period of time when. One may be red and one may be green, but what we generally see with. With signal spacing in a corridor such as this is generally you try to. Generally you have green for the series of intersections that. You know, so that they're, they're kind of green together for most of the time. Now, for the southbound, you won't have. You won't have to shut that green down for that, or I take that back. So northbound, you won't have to, you won't have. A southbound left that has to cut in front of it with a green arrow. So that will allow, the only thing that'll stop the northbound green. Will be the side street when the side street is going. And so, but for southbound. You'll have a red for when that northbound left has an arrow. If, if indeed it does have an arrow, may run without an arrow. To start, but if there's enough traffic, there may have to put a phase with an arrow. So. It would be red for the side street and for that northbound left. I think there may be some phasing at the YMCA as well. So. Generally, I hope I'm answering the question, but generally speaking, you try to get the green together in the corridor for north, south. Because that means the traffic can flow through a series of signals without stopping as, as best you can. That's the idea, so. Even if the side street has to sit there and wait, wow.
Yeah, well, I guess my question, you've pretty well answered, except. You said generally, we'll, we'll be there, will there be times? When it won't? Be both green.
Yeah, I mean. Sometimes you, you can. It just depends on how the, see, we have what we, when you progress signal corridor, basically you set up. You have to progress it in both directions and you can optimize both directions, or sometimes you might favor one direction over another. So if you've got a lot more traffic in one direction than another, which isn't necessarily the case here, but you might have one direction is. One direction is favoring more of that green flow through there. So the other direction, they have a little more red stoppage. Sometimes they, they stagger. Lights to control queuing for some reason, and if it's really close together, which isn't the case here. The other situation is you might have. If the school gets out and there's a, they need a long. A long green time for the traffic coming out of the school, that light may stay red a little bit longer. During that time than this signal will. So, but there's ways to control, you know, you might hold the traffic. Upstream so that it doesn't like back into the other one. So it's lots you can do with these signals. The other, the last one I can think of is if there's pedestrians, if a pedestrian pushes a button, that's going to. Hold that red for the north, south for quite a while, so.
Good there, Commissioner Hours? Commissioner Hours, can you hear us? So just a, since period of loss, Commissioner Hours. My trap, my question's also traffic related. And it just, I may have missed it, but are we, is all this study and everything, and probably is it, but is the study? Into this intersection, this new intersection, is it based on a two lane road or a four lane road?
We, we, yeah, we did, what we did is we, we did a five year, five years out, twenty twenty eight, we did a twenty forty, forty five, twenty years out, and so. We assumed a four lane Jackson Creek Parkway because that's what it's planned to be. So if, if at the, at the time of the site development plan, if it. If there's indications that it's going to have to operate with the two lane road, that's going to, we'll have to study that and see, you know. Maybe a signal might be warranted sooner if, if it's a two lane road and, you know, looking at. How to do turn lanes at that time on the two lane road. So, yeah, if. Depending on the timing and, and when the site plan comes in, we may have to look at more of those details, but for, at this level for the plat, we looked at the, we just looked at the four lane, so.
Yeah, that's what we looked at. Now, just on the, you're talking about the light kind of sequencing, is that? Are the lights on Jackson Creek Parkway existing traffic lights, are they sequenced? Do we know if they're sequenced or not? And will they be? Or is that something that the town needs to address further down the road?
That's a good question. I believe they are, but. I'm not positive, so I have to go back and look at our. Our notes on that, but yeah.
If they're sequenced now, that would, that would help.
I know that when Tribeview has been looking at. In the past, they looked at the Jackson Creek Corridor and they did. Kind of run an analysis of some. Signals, progressed corridor, like it's in, it's on a cycle, all the signals have a cycle length that's either the same or half. Or a multiple of it, so. Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Sure.
Is there any, any other questions from?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner Eggly. Did you ever consider, as much as I personally dislike them, a roundabout versus a signalized location?
I can't recall.
You know, we've really relied on, FHU is designing. Widening of Jackson Creek Parkway and we're, we've worked closely with them. But I, I think it's, you know, they have been the ones that, that are designing the roadway and they're, you know, telling us the. The box that we have to fit into and we've been providing them all of our traffic analysis and info, and so they're fitting us into their plans, but. I don't think that they have ever considered a, a roundabout there.
Yeah, I will say this, generally speaking, if you've got. If you've got a arterial corridor with a series of regular signalized or possibly signalized intersections. You generally try to keep that theme because if you. If you throw in a roundabout somewhere in the middle, it can tend to break up your whole platooning, if you will, of traffic. Which helps keep. You have like platoons of traffic moving. Groupings of traffic moving through a series of signals. If you put in a roundabout, that can tend to just throw that all out of whack. And it just kind of breaks up that platooning benefit. For a series of signals, if you, if you introduce a roundabout, it can have that effect of kind of just throwing out your your whole. Plan of of progressing traffic through a series of signals. So generally speaking, if you've got a. A progressed arterial corridor. You want to try to keep that theme and have the traffic control be traffic signals instead of roundabouts.
Do I, is memory serving well? Don't we have a, isn't there a roundabout planned further north on Jackson Creek Parkway?
Not that I'm aware.
Pigby, you might be thinking of Pigby.
There's one at Noelwood, I believe, north of Highway one oh five.
Right.
Yeah. That's off off center, obviously, from. From this.
And probably this question is more for Brett. Why not move it, move the, if we're gonna have a signal, why not move it to the far north end of the development instead of. Right in the center where we at least gain an additional three hundred, three hundred and fifty feet of spacing? For traffic.
For, you know, a a commercial development like this, we wanted to bisect the site with the access point. We have a user that's, you know, planned on that southeast corner of the site. They really set the the distance of, you know, two hundred and seventy four feet by whatever that was, you know, the box, that's what they they want, and it happens to. Basically kind of be in the middle of the site, which then enables, you know, you'd have. Additional, you know, the lots around it. So it's just kind of how we've sub planned to subdivide the site, I think. So. Because if you had your your law or your access at the far north. End of the site, then access to the south would. Not be ideal.
Okay. I I just wanted to point out that in the entirety of Jackson Creek Parkway from Baptist Road to Highway one oh five. Currently. We have four stoplights. And by by doing this, now we'll add a third within the space of a thousand feet. And I just think that that's. That's not conducive. To what we want in terms of traffic control and safety. So that's my. That's the only point I'd like to make. Thanks, that's all I had.
I would just. If I can add that, you know. In the initial phase, it is a stop sign controlled intersection. At at some point in the future, at complete buildout, and as Jeff said, he's conservative in his analysis and probably. We've given, you know. Maybe the most dense. Plan that could, you know, be built on that site. Would be my guess. And so at some point, it could, you know, warrant a signal. Day one, first user, it's a stop sign controlled intersection. I think. At some point, you know, safety would warrant that, you know, that it it would deem a signal for pedestrians across the road for other various. Reasons. And so I think that I think safety would. You know. A signal would help with safety as opposed to hinder it.
Yeah, and in some cases, the. At some cases, a T intersection, which are pretty efficient, they have few, many, lot, there's a lot fewer conflict points, a lot of times. Especially if you have nearby signals that create those gaps in the traffic stream. Sometimes T intersections can operate well. Much longer than you think they will with. Because the main reason for a signal at this location is traffic wanting to exit and turn left to go north. So. Depending on the uses and how many. Traffic intensity of the development that actually goes in. How many of those trips want to go north? If it's a lot of convenience trips, maybe people more use them. In the southbound direction, so there's right in, right out anyway. So it could be that. A signal may never be warranted depending on. On the, or it may never be needed if 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 it flows, if it works well with people being able to turn left. With gaps from the nearby signals. Then you may never need a signal potentially. We just like to bring up the possibility that a signal might be needed or warranted, so.
You for all that explanation. We appreciate it. At this time, I'd be looking for a motion to vote.
Make motion to recommend approval of the applicant's request to approve. The final plat known as Woodmore Place or Replat B. Based on the findings of fact attached hereto is exhibit four in the staff report.
Thank you. Acting Chair Smith.
Yes, I think this this. When we talk about responsible development, I think this is exactly what we're talking about. I appreciate all the work that went into this. I appreciated the time we spent. Conversing with the sketch plan that was, I thought that went really well, and I look forward to doing more projects like that in the future. I think I think this is a good one for the town. To yes, do I say yes?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Green. Commissioner Eggly.
Before I I I vote, I just wanted to say that I I don't believe we'll be seeing this project again in front of us. Is that correct, Dan?
They, depending on the uses there and the proposals, they can go through the administrative site plan approval process, so it would not come back before you.
Okay. With that in mind, I would just. Encourage staff, and I know you well, to. Look closely at the the traffic and the opportunities for. Traffic control for safety reasons, and for that I'll I'll vote yes on this.
Thank you. Commissioner Peterson. Commissioner Hours.
Yes, the only comment that I would like to make with my yes vote is as Commissioner Eggly said. During the site plan review, I believe that. Although there's an approved sketch plan, that during the site plan review, if there are any. Significant changes from the site plan to what the site, I mean, from the. Approved sketch plan, any significant changes? To the. Site. To the sketch plan that you have the latitude, the director has the latitude to. To call that into question.
Understood. Thank you. And Commissioner Hatch. That concludes roll call, six in favor, none opposed. Thank you.
I, there are a lot of people online and we did not announce when the meeting started that we're continuing. Yeah, you may want to do that now.
Yes, Commissioner Green just brought up an excellent point, and for everybody online. We will be, we have, we have one more public hearing ahead of the Conexus public hearing. But just want to let everybody know that the. We intend to continue the Conexus. Plan, which is, which would be item C on the agenda. So I apologize if we kept folks around that may have wanted to speak on that. You are welcome to speak during public comments as well, but just want to inform everybody of that. Thank you, Commissioner Green. With that, our second case is a request for approval of a final plat known as Falcon Commerce Center Park and signage. This case has been noticed for a public hearing and I will now send it over to staff for the presentation.
Thank you, Chair. This case is case number thirteen, twenty twenty four, final plat for Falcon Commerce Center Park and signage. The public notice has been provided per chapter eighteen of the Land Development Code, requiring a public notice at least fifteen days prior to any public hearing for a land use change. It'd be mailed to property owners within five hundred feet and posted on the property. The applicant has complied with the aforementioned notice requirements and affidavits are in file in the town town of Monument Planning Department. The applicant is Tom Blanc of Forest Lake LLC. The 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 location is shown and depicted in this image here is Tarazo Drive and Squadron Drive. The area that's in blue filing number four, I only have that in place so that you could see that that's a site that you just worked on. So I wanted to show the proximity of these two. Pieces of property to filing number four. Filing four is not the subject of tonight's meeting. The 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 to the north is filing number four. To the west is. Not had the the the. U P S Lewis Palmer Height is not that you could see what I did here, can't you? Yeah. This is part of Falcon Commerce Center. It's it's right in the center. We've been working on it for quite some time. They are, they're seeking approval of final plat for Falcon Commerce Center Park and Sign. The applicant, Mr. Tom Blanc, is seeking this approval. There's two parcels, one is one point nine one one acres. It's a, it's a, an open space park site to the south of. Falcon Commerce Center filing number four, and then there's a smaller tract of point zero three four acres to the east of there or the location of the property sign. They're plotting their two tracks separately to allow transfer of ownership of these tracks to the Forest Lakes Metropolitan District. We've reviewed the the plat and it does comply with our the the standards for plats of subdivision. The content and form of the proposed plat conforms with county and state requirements as well. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Andrea Barlow, who can do a much more effective job of presenting this.
Evening Planning Commission, Andrea Barlow with N E S representing Tom Blanc with Forest Lakes. I've got a very brief presentation and I'm really going to skim over a lot of it because Dan has already covered it. Very simple project here. As mentioned, the really the purpose of these, this plat is to identify these two tracks. So that they can be to plot the two tracks so they can be transferred in ownership to the Forest Lakes Metropolitan District from Forest Lakes LLC. Next slide. Just a general kind of broader location, we'll stay on this one. That shows the the park tract and the sign tract, which is the freestanding pylon sign that's there at the adjacent to I twenty five. Next slide. This is the plat itself, which is very simple, just identifying the legal boundaries of those tracks. Next slide. I just wanted to show the plan that was approved for the park that was approved in March last year, and the park is actually nearing completion there. You can see the construction of the. Kind of formal area, the sales structure and so on. So that's nearing completion at this point. Next slide. And here's a photograph of the pylon sign that was approved as part of the QuickTrip final P U D. And it has been subject to a separate sign permit. So we're actually just plotting tracks for uses that have already been approved for through a different process. And then very quickly, next slide, I'm not going to go through them, but we did look at the final plat criteria compliance. A lot of them aren't really relevant because we're not actually plotting lots. We're not proplating lots for buildings or structures other than the sign, which is already approved through another method. And so they're really not directly applicable, but we try to address them as best we could. There are no public improvements. The one thing that there is a requirement for is that any tract or lot is has access. There is an easement as as with the change of ownership, there is an easement through the parcel adjacent to the sign tract to get access to the track for maintenance. Obviously, the park is directly adjacent to Tarazo right away. And that's it. Very simple. Wish I could have gone first.
And I guess the part I would highlight is part of finding a fact is that. The final plat is consistent with Falcon Commerce Center Phase Two preliminary P U D. So there's really just no question. It's doing what they set out to do at the very beginning and was approved as part of the original P U D for the site.
Thank you very much. But at this time, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing for any comments, anybody. In chambers that would like to speak, no? Anybody online that would like to comment on this project?
At this time, I don't see anyone online who wants to participate.
Okay, at this time, we'll close the public hearing and I will go to Commissioner Questions and Comments and start with Commissioner Eggly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Really, I just had a question on a clarification under project details. It talks about. Access to the subject property remains Tarazo Drive, a public road owned and maintained by El Paso County. Why is it that El Paso County is maintaining this road within town limits? So that's incorrect in.
It is incorrect. I'm not sure where you're reading that from, but it is a town of monument street.
Where did I say that?
It's in page two of the staff report.
That would be a Danier. I apologize. It's been a couple of weeks. I apologize.
I'm good then. Thanks.
Commissioner Hours, you're up if you have any questions.
I have no questions. I'm sure that's surprising.
We appreciate you, and so does Andrea. She's been here for a while. Okay, no further questions from commissioners. Look for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner Eggly. I make a motion to recommend approval of the applicant's request. To approve the final plat known as Falcon Commerce Center Park and Signage based upon the findings of fact attached hereto is exhibit four in the staff report.
Commissioner Hours, second.
Thank you. Acting Chair Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Green.
Yes.
Commissioner Eggly.
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hours.
Yes.
Commissioner Hatch. Thank you. That concludes the vote. Motion passes, six in favor, zero opposed.
Okay, move on to our third case, a request for sketch plan review, approval for Conexus Lot Two, a proposed residential subdivision. And component of the Conexus P U D. This case has been noticed for public hearing. What I would ask is for clarification for the motion for. What we have, it's looking for the date, but we're going to continue it to the next meeting, obviously. What would be the language or what would be the? The verbiage, yep, the verbiage for. To allow the staff applicant to address blank, it says there.
So the a motion to continue the public hearing to February twelfth. That is what we're looking for.
Yeah, I would look for, well, we, yeah, we're just gonna go ahead and continue it. So I'll look for a motion for continuance.
Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner Eggly. I make a motion to continue this public hearing to February twelfth.
Thank you. I will now have the vote. Acting Chair Smith. Commissioner Green, Commissioner Eggly.
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson, Commissioner Hours.
Yes.
Commissioner Hatch. Thank you. That concludes the vote. Motion passes for continuing, six in favor, zero opposed.
You're right. At this time, we're done with all the agenda items and we move towards non-agenda public items. You're right. At this time, um, we're done with all the agenda items and we move towards non-agenda public items. At this time, anyone wishing to make a public comment may do, ask that if you come up to the podium, that you would sign in, put your name and address there on the sheet. Well, is anyone present would like to speak? No. Anybody online? Ready any hands?
At this time, no one wishes to participate online.
Okay, thank you. Um, reports, communications and announcements. Any commissioners have any reports, any communications or announcements?
I have a comment.
Okay.
Um, at our last meeting, when we were looking at the final floor, the, the Falcon project, uh, it was a split vote, uh, four to three it passed. And I listened to the meeting Monday night as well as I read their packet. And I know that the county council does not read our minutes. And, and I understand why. They're, they're long reports. They're meaty reports. There's a lot to digest. I don't blame them for not reading our minutes, but it's barely mentioned that it was a split vote. It's mentioned in the beginning that we approved the project and later it says what the vote is, but that's it. That's it. No reasoning. What were our concerns? We spend a lot of time, um, reading the packets and discussing these in meetings for it to be kind of blown off by the time it gets to town council. It was pretty upsetting for me. It wasn't mentioned, I think if it's not mentioned in your staff report, you could have talked about it. Even when there's one vote against a project, even when there's one vote, I think it should be either said or written clearly that there was a concern about this, which resulted in Commissioner voting no. But this was, you know, this was a close vote. And I wish there had been more because the things we were concerned about were not even discussed by the council.
Kind of, kind of carry on that to what, to what you were saying, Commissioner Green. I, I love, I, I really liked the findings of fact that you include with the packets. I think that's fantastic. I think we should, as commissioners, take a closer look at that too before the meetings. And if we do have things that we want to put in there as part of the findings of fact, I think that, that, and I admit, I've been ill-prepared in that regard too, because I, I know there were some things that, um, could have added to, um, to submit. And I think that findings of fact is really important. And I think the council will read those. They'll pay attention to that too. So it's part of the yes vote, of course, but yeah, just communicating with the council.
Yeah, Chair, the, the findings are actually attached to the resolution. I mean, as an exhibit, so they're, they are very important. It's establishing why you, why you approved something or didn't approve it.
Other comments from commissioners? That, I will go ahead and adjourn this meeting.
Oh, well, give me a second to at least eat some crow and to apologize. Yeah, I just want to apologize for the errors tonight. As I said, it's been a rough couple of weeks. I, I, I'm not proud of those, so I'll do better. Um, the comprehensive plan, uh, the contract with our, uh, for consultants for the comprehensive plan update were, uh, was approved on Monday night, uh, which, uh, with the Lakota Group. Um, it's a set of, uh, consultants, um, uh, that the lead Lakota Group is out of Chicago, but they're local consultants, which include V three, uh, Radian, um, and then several others dealing with economic development, stormwater, traffic, uh, community outreach. Uh, we've got a very strong group, um, getting ready to now pu- put together the kickoff for that. Uh, we will be doing a lot of our reaches I've talking about, talked to you about before. Um, so I'm excited about that. We've also, um, expanded the, um, comprehensive plan, uh, study to include stormwater management, uh, the storm and water management, uh, plan update as well. So it's a pretty significant task we're about to do. The second contract that, uh, agreement that was signed with, uh, Economic and Planning Services out of Denver um, is to do a, um, a downtown, to do a development impact fee nexus study, uh, to take a, uh, take another look at, um, impact fees that, uh, we, uh, charge to, uh, developers as they impact our, our services and our facilities and infrastructure. Again, that will, that a large component of that study will be development, developer and, and community outreach. Uh, we do not want to do a, a study like that in a vacuum, so we will be working with, um, our development partners and our property owners in town, um, throughout that process. The, um, and then, um, that's enough. There's a lot going on. And, uh, again, I apologize for the errors, uh, as I said, uh, I, I'll do my best not to have that happen again. And your comments, Commissioner Green, are well noted. Um, I do believe, uh, the council really does, uh, trust and, and listen to your comments. Um, and there was significant conversation during that hearing, uh, as well on their part of that property. And, uh, so, I mean, they took the, they took the process very seriously.
Excuse me, Dan. Um, I know you've got a, a full plate, but I assume that you'll be putting out a calendar or a schedule of, uh, for the comprehensive plan, additional meetings with us and council members.
Uh, yes. So you're, you're gonna probably, we're going to be quiet for a while because we've got a lot of background information and to collect and put together for that. But yeah, there'll be a full calendar. If you go to, um, our, um, to the town website, there's a, there's going to be a full, um, program, uh, program posted on there. All the information that we're going to be trying to collect and put together as well as a schedule. Your involvement's going to be very key to this, so we will be notifying and letting you know upfront. If there's any specific topics that you're interested in the comprehensive plan, um, it, it's very comprehensive. It's got a lot of topics. Pick some and let us know. So we don't, um, uh, you don't have to be the expert in everything, but we would like you to participate, uh, where you, where you, uh, where you're interested in. So.
Appreciate that. Is there any other comments? Ready, raise? Okay, with that, we will adjourn this meeting at nineteen forty-two.